I'm calling the May meeting of the North Liberty Board of Trustees to order. The first item on the agenda, are there any additions, changes to the agenda that anyone would like to make? I see none. Item number two on our agenda, public comment. Seeing no one in the gallery, I will move on to item number three.
Let's move to North Liberty in September. But I've been in Iowa now 20 years. Previously was Executive Director of the Civil Rights Commission in Cedar Rapids. I was there about 12 years. Now I'm at another location, another job. I teach at Mount Mercy in their MBA and MSU program. And as I said in my application, libraries were my safe space growing up. I grew up in Kansas City in some rocky areas. And so books and libraries were my safe space. So I was really excited to get the call saying, would you like? I was like, yes, yes, please. And all my family was like, oh, my gosh, of course, yes. So very excited to be here. Thank you. And I'm looking forward to getting to know each one of you. And the work you're doing, I've already read, it's amazing. Absolutely amazing.
I'm Cara Flynn. I don't know, is that, do you want more?
Hello.
No, there's not much.
That's what I said.
That's about a star ago.
Cara, you got a lot of stuff.
I actually am the county, I guess, trustee. So I just live like five minutes away. And yeah, I have, I just adore Jenny. Same. My podcast, and that's how I got to know her. And I was like, yes, I will do this. So, yeah.
Oh, I'm Scott Clemmons. I'm a very, very, very longtime adult volunteer at the library and decided I would kick it up to the trustees at some point. I'm a computer guy, and you might hear that from another Scott as well.
I'm Brandy Green. This is my first year on the board. I moved to North Liberty about five years ago, and I'm a pharmacist.
Angela Fote, I moved about three years ago. So we're a relatively new crew to North Liberty. In my day job, I'm a nonprofit lawyer. And like you, libraries were my safe place growing up. So it's been good to be on the board.
Scott Kramer, we've lived in North Liberty for about 11 years now. And also working in IT, I'm an IT business architect. So I mostly tell people how to build things, as opposed to actually building them.
Good to meet you.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item number four, the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for April?
I move to approve the minutes from April.
Right. A second?
A second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Hearing none in the negative, the April minutes are approved. Moving on to the January minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the January minutes? So that's me, Scott, and Cara.
I think there's a change to the January minutes, right?
Yeah, just respelling my last name, but other than that, I'm good. I have an E on the end because I like to be difficult.
My name is Stephanie with an F, so I get it.
So with that change forthcoming, would we like to approve the minutes tonight as well? I would.
Anyone?
I move to approve the minutes with that change.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The January minutes are approved. January.
Stephanie, did I hear you say you're Stephanie with an F?
Yes.
Okay. And is it M U N E S T M A N?
It's M U N S T E R M A N.
Okay. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
And now item number five, our staff introduction. Emily, our Family Services Librarian?
You weren't going to give my last name a shot?
Oh, Sheridan Taber.
Oh, great job. Yes. Hello, for those of us that I have not met, for those of you that I have not met, my name is Emily Sheridan Taber. I am the Family Services Librarian, which means I provide programming and early literacy engagement for children five and under and their families. I work closely, obviously, with the youth and teen, but we have a split. So I do five and under-ish. And then our youth and teen department, who I think you heard from last month or the month before, Kayla and Zoe, they do like school age, so kindergarten through 12th grade, between the two of them. There is obviously a lot of overlap with us, and we work closely, all being a youth department. I have lived in North Liberty for about 13 years. I have three children. I've got a sophomore, going to be a junior, going to be an eighth grader, and then going to be a second grader. So we've got quite a lot going on. As an update from my last presentation last year, I had talked about our Playful Parenting Group, which is a cornerstone program for our Family Place Initiative. So, sorry, designation. I'll just do a quick recap of that before we move on to this month's or year's presentation. So in 2019, Jenny and I went to training, and the library became a Family Place library, which focuses programming and services to a whole family. Sort of like the whole body approach, if you want to think of it that way, both library services. So whether your family is a family of five with young children, like me, or it's just you and a dog, or just you, or you and a partner and pets, or just a single parent with children, whatever your family is, that's what the Family Place Initiative tries to encourage, is providing services for a whole family, rather than children being one specific thing, teen being one specific group, and then adults. So a whole family, whatever your family is. The cornerstone program of that is the Playful Parenting Group, which is a five-week playgroup where you are encouraged to play with your children, child, for 75 minutes. Just child-led, that one-on-one time that not a lot of parents get, even if you are privileged enough to have recreation time. It's hard to set aside that time for your family. In addition to that, we give access to five community resource professionals in the disciplines of early literacy, which the library takes care of, music and movement, speech and language, nutrition, and child development. So we introduce parents and caregivers to those resources in the community that focus on children. So last year, I had come and talked about, really, I'm sorry, I should back up a little bit. We were, got the Family Place designation in November of 2019 with grand plans to come back in the spring of 2020 to start our programming. Obviously, we were thrown off by a couple of years. So just in the last three years, we've gotten back into that process of programming. And my goal last year was to really get this playgroup down, where we had a very scheduled time where we would offer it so that families could always know when it was going to be offered, so they could look out for it. If they couldn't do it this year, then they know that they could do it the next year. So we have now gotten, there is a spring session that will either be a Saturday or an evening. And there is a fall session that will always be, and always, of course, with like, you know, as much as we can provide it, hopefully it'll stay that way. There'll be a fall session that will be in place of one of our weekly storytimes at like 10:30 in the morning. So you have home caregivers or folks who stay home with their children, or people who have a flexible schedule and can, you know, be there with their kids in the mornings. So I am proud that we got that set down. And it was, like I said, it was one of my goals for last year, and I was really happy that we were able to get that set up. Does anyone have any questions about that? I know it was like super quick. I'm happy to answer any. Or if you have questions later, you're welcome to email me, and I'd be happy to talk about it. I like to talk, so.
I have a question.
Yeah, please do.
How many libraries in Iowa are Family Place libraries?
I did forget that. We were the first in Iowa. And I believe we are still the only. Yeah. So we're very proud of that.
Burlington seemed really interested when I talked to her the other day.
But not yet.
She was peaked up, like.
Oh, but that was only like a couple of weeks ago.
She asked for more info.
Yeah, yeah. So I hope that more.
Might be joined.
I hope that more libraries. It is quite, the front-end cost is pretty big. But we had such great support from the city to do it. Our city administrator, when Jenny sat down and talked to him about it, he was like, yeah, let's do this. Let's figure out how to do it. And in the community, we had a lot of support from Rotary, the Friends and the Rotary, and other just individual donations of people who wanted to see this program happen. And we have community partners that fill that, Community Resource Professional, Enrichment Therapies in North Liberty, the one in Corvail, whose name is escaping me, Sensory Kids helps, Music for Life helps. We've had a nutritionist from the university, from WIC. We just have a lot of great community partners that help and donate their time to that. So it's a really awesome program. There was something else I was thinking of when Jenny asked that question, but I can't. Oh, I am part of a couple of different groups in different nationwide. And one of them is the CLAL, the Colorado Libraries for Early Literacy. And almost every library in Colorado is a Family Place library. So it's really nice to have that. Even though there's not one in Iowa, I still have those professional relationships that I can talk to about and get feedback or get ideas from and see how every library is different and how they set up their Playful Parenting Group or their Family Place programming. Yeah. All right, so I'm here tonight to speak of our art mural concept proposal. That's a mouthful. If you've been to the library, the kids' area is great and bright. It is a little busy, though. So we are, myself, Kayla, our marketing people, Melanie and Danny, and then we've also gotten help from our Public Services Librarian, Kelly. Want to get a more cohesive idea or a cohesive plan for the library, the kids' area, what it looks like back there. So one thing we really want, and we've seen in other places, that it just pops out. It looks awesome. It's very welcoming. It's inviting, is a mural. So if you, and anytime you would like to stop by the library, I'd be happy to give anyone a tour. If you go into one of our play areas in our kids' room, it's, and there will be pictures. So this is just a slight introduction. It's called our Learning Center, and that's where we have programming and then playtime anytime we're not having like storytimes. And it's got, what was it at the time, a very appealing wallpaper. And it's just kind of too busy right now. We want something that is a little bit more representative of our community and representative of the things that the library wants to be. So we talked about this for a long time, and finally, we're like, let's do it. Let's try to do an art mural. So this is our proposal that we came up with. We call our committee Camp Kids' Area Mural Proposal. I'm pretty sure that's Camp, Camp with a K. So we proposed, we made this up. We proposed it to Jenny. She has checked off on it, and now we're in the next steps of fundraising for money, whether it's grants, Friends has already given us money. And then we will start on the next step, which is taking wallpaper off, getting some of the other areas ready for a mural. And then we'll do an artist call-out. So today I have our proposal, and then I also have Kelly, who does our art cabinet. She does the artists that come into the library. She was very generous and gave us her form and changed it for us to tailor it to what we need. So I also have an example of that. So our art mural concept proposal, our vision is to add art to the children's area to create a space that feels welcoming, interactive, and inspiring, where children feel safe and they foster a love of learning. We really want to incorporate diverse pictures of children. So any kid that comes into our library can not only see themselves, but also see representations of the community and really the world as a whole. Our concept is we have three specific areas of the children, aspects, sorry, of the children's area. We want our values, our diversity play, and a sense of belonging. We want to promote that creativity, that wonder, that early literacy, and the safety of being in the library, like a few of you have also mentioned, as your safe place. We want to reflect the realistic and inclusive depictions of children. So right now, what we have are, we have a couple of larger photos. And then our lactation room is also wrapped with a very, it's not that it's bad. It's very cute depiction of animals in Iowa City-esque. And while we love it, it's just time for renewal and an upgrade. And what we want for that is a more realistic representation of the kids that we have in our community. So first, and this has changed a little bit just due to the way that our process is going. So the first thing we were going to do was prep the surfaces, the wallpaper removal, because we were applying for a grant. So that was in our process. We wanted that to be the first thing for when we submitted the grant. This is our first thing. We did not get that grant, so now we've kind of gone back to the drawing board. I think we're going to switch the two. So the first one will be commission the artist and muralist and then prepare the space. Then our phase one is to get the mural in the Learning Center. And the hanging art, which again, we have photos of, so I'll show you. The phase two is the lactation, and I'll come back to why it's called the cabin up there in just a minute. And then our phase three is the cabin or the lactation interior. So I'll come back to those when I have a picture. It's a little bit easier to visualize. So this is, like I said, this is our playroom, our programming room. It's called the Learning Center. So that green wall, which would be the north wall in the library, is a wallpaper. So we want to take that off, and it will start where the door is open there with the white. And it will come all the way around to the third photo where it's kind of dark in the back there. There was a light bulb out when we took this picture. So it'll wrap around the whole room from start to finish. So the hanging art, where the counter is, we will put large art pieces there that tie in with the mural to accentuate. So this is the outside of the kids' area. Again, on that second picture, you could see the three larger pieces of art, not photos, paintings. We, once we get the inside done, we will decide what we're going to do there, if we're going to continue to have larger pieces of art that tie in, or if it's just too busy. Maybe we change it out a little bit, and we'll just see how it goes. We want to be flexible, and like, as you can see, it's really busy back there. So having some places that maybe are not, that are not filled, having some white space is good, too. It'll make other things more poignant, more prominent. So on the first picture, to everyone's right is our, currently our lactation room. We, Mercy Hospital built the lactation room for us, and it is amazing. We were, I don't know, did Kayla talk about the Culture City?
No.
Okay.
Not real, not in great.
Not this time. Two years ago, Kayla went through a long process of getting the community center verified as a sensory-friendly building through Culture City. So one of those criteria is that we need to have a space where people who are having a sensory episode or a sensory challenge can go to calm down. So we automatically thought of the lactation room. We want to keep it for lactating people or people that need to be with their children. But we also thought it could have a dual use of a calm-down area as well. So we are, and again, this is flexible. We're kind of at the very beginning of all of this. So we wanted to rebrand it as the Calm Down Cabin because it also could be used for a child-parent interaction or a child-caregiver interaction. But it also could be used as someplace where someone having a sensory issue can go in and calm down. So, and as you can see, the wrap is really beautiful. It is just we are going in a different direction. Something a little bit more cohesive, a little bit more representative. And these are just additional pictures of the exterior of the cabin. That door faces the south side of the library. This is the interior of the cabin. So we are not able to, due to fire code, cover or in any way change the top of it. So I think what we're going to try to do down the line is maybe get sound panels similar to what we have in the hallway of the library to just absorb some of that sound. If someone were to have some sensory needs or they really need to calm down, then they could go in there, and it could be a quiet space for them. We are going to take, I think, everything out. We'll put another chair, maybe the same one, we'll see, in there. And then a stool for sure, for anyone to put their feet up that needs it. But we're going to repaint it a little bit whiter color, so it's a little bit more calming. And then we'll probably take out the picture. And then we'll see if down the road, we want to, again, put something that we would have on the outside of the Learning Center or even the inside of the Learning Center in there that just ties in everything in the art that's outside. Again, we'll kind of have to see how it looks and how we feel about the calm space of it. So we have picked out a couple of art styles. One of them is realism, obviously. We kind of chose these as a famous representation, but also have representation, or diverse representation, in artists that we really liked or depictions of artists that we really like. Another one is illustration. So tying in the realistic to the illustration is at the head of what we're thinking about right now. Again, probably any, none of us are artists, none of us are muralists. This is our first time doing anything like this. So our vision will probably for sure change with the muralists that we get and their expertise and discussions. Oh, we also wanted to have, so these are both outdoor murals. So we wanted to have some type of idea of scale and representation for an actual mural. Baroque is another art style that we really liked. And not because Baroque is really busy, as you can see. But what we really liked about Baroque was that the background is in the background. It's dark. It's, maybe has some additional things going on. But the things in the foreground really pop, and that's what we want, is that those depictions of children really pop out. I also like the realistic representation of animals in Baroque, which I think is pretty cool. So that is our contact information. If any of you had any questions, you can obviously get it from Jenny or just call the library. It's fine, too. I'm so sorry. What I did forget to talk about was what our actual idea for the mural is. So in the, we want to have a base background of nature. So a meadow, a forest, something like that, maybe a cornfield. Who knows? We'll work with our artists on that. And then for our foreground or our realistic depictions, we'll have children creating. So there will be kids. And maybe we've kind of talked about the ideas of having them be like, so for example, we saw Frido Kahlo, and there may be like a young Frido Kahlo, right? Like, and she'll be creating something. Or similar depictions of artists or authors or scientists and have them creating what they have created in life. So that will go mainly on the wallpaper wall where the green is right now. And then flowing into the outside space, what we were hoping was that the large pieces of art, pictures or paintings, would be the product of what the children from the inside created. So if you think of Frido Kahlo, for example, then we would have a painting that looked like something that she created. Or if you had a scientist, you would have a painting of some type of invention or something. We have also toyed with the idea of partnering with Big Picture to have like guest artists be, have a spot. So like maybe one of those on the outside wall would be a guest artist. And every month or six months, however often we could get it, having one of their young artists have something in there so that the community could show it to the community. So that's our idea so far. Like I said, it is, it's in the very early planning stages. Any questions?
When you do something like a mural, are you able to license that design and artwork? So if you wanted to have like a consistent visual on, let's say, like the website or printed materials for the library, that you can use that?
I have no idea. That's a great question.
For mugs or?
Yeah.
Write that down, yes. One of the things that we are talking about when we go to talk about, when we go ask for funding for this, is the idea that it's a public art piece. And so even though it is in a library that has limited hours, right? We're not open all the time. Anytime we are open, though, anyone can go and see it. So that goes right along with that. I don't know, and that's a great question.
I think it would be just a matter of probably of negotiating with the artist.
Yeah.
To make sure that we have some rights to using, recreating, which I think most artists would probably find that beneficial.
I agree. Do you know how it is for the outdoor one?
No.
Yeah. I haven't, I didn't even think of it.
I think Jahaami would probably be fine.
Yeah.
Whatever we wanted to do.
Yeah, thank you. That's, like I said, something I never considered.
And then just FYI for anyone who's interested, if you're looking for Culture City, it is with a K.
Yes, sorry.
Culture City with a K.
Culture City with a K, just like Camp. So I just wanted to quickly run through our form. We are constantly trying to find out which mode of communication works best for us. So right now, this is a Google form. It might not always stay a Google form because we are a Microsoft entity. But just, this is what Kelly used, and so we just copied it over. So that's what it is right now. So we have this application. This is, I couldn't get my work, the programmer's drive, to sign on. So I signed in with my personal email. And then there's a link to the, to the presentation that you just saw, so the artist can go through, or the prospective artist can go through and look at it. And then we, of course, ask for general contact information. Then we ask for a portfolio. So we want to see the work that you've done, your website, any social media presence you may have. And then we want to, we would like the artists to give us five samples of the work that they've done, specifically focusing on large-scale things. So Kelly, when she came into the committee, she said, one thing you really want to look out for is if someone can take something that they put on an eight-by-11 or a five-by-10 and modify that to a full wall, which again, was something we had not considered. So it was really great to have her input on that. So this is the place for them to submit those. Oh, no. I can't go any further. So the other questions that are on here is we ask the artists to briefly describe any work they may have had through diverse, with diverse representation. So whether that is a, if you're working with underserved populations or underrepresented populations, or if you've actually painted art that depicts people of color or women. And then, of course, we ask for a CV, and then the personal connection to the library. Another thing that Kelly brought to us, which I think she took from her experience with the outdoor mural, is is it just going to be you? Are you going to bring people in? We would love for youth to be involved in this. Just coming into it at this point, we're not sure if that is something that we would be able to coordinate and do. If the artist has a vision and can direct them and oversee them, then that would be something that we would love.
UAW worked with, I think it was ACT.
They worked with us for our outside mural, too.
Yep, and that would be great. Yeah, we're hoping that someone.
But their time is also, they did not do anything but vet the applicants for us.
Oh, got it, yeah.
We did the rest.
Any involvement that we can have from organizations in the community, especially ones that deal with youth, we would welcome it and love it. Yeah, really, the more.
Definitely insights on that one.
Yes, yeah.
And then I would only say, not to put a damper on it, but we don't have to change that DEI question.
Okay.
56, but we can talk about that later.
I was going to say, please.
I just wanted to say it out loud.
Yeah, please bring it up.
Make sure that we.
We will, yeah. Yep, we will, for sure.
Emily, that question that you had related to the artist's process?
Yeah.
How big is that field?
Oh, yeah, great question. I did not make and have only tested.
Because I could see that being a long answer.
A lot of them are short, are long answer, short answer.
Yeah.
Love to see what Kelly did with it.
It's either, it's either long answer or short answer. But I also see what you're saying. Maybe we can put a button there that they can also upload something if it's a longer.
It could be a page or two, depending on.
Yeah, yeah, portfolio. That's a very good point. Thank you, Scott.
What's your budget?
Don't look at me. Guys, no, I'm just looking at you for moral support, Jenny.
Great question. We have no idea. We have, Kayla has a very detailed, logical mind. And she has measured and done some research on to what artists charge for square footage. So it depends if we can get a full, like a one-and-done, or if they're going to charge per square foot. We've come up with some numbers of like $5,000. We've come up with some numbers of $8,000. Some other people have said $30,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again.
Our mural outside was 10.
Yes, yeah.
I'd be stunned if you got something for $5,000.
Right. I think that was for us, beginning, we were like, no idea of the cost. And Kayla also, her brother does set design. And Kayla also, her brother does set designs for two different companies. I think one is the casino, Riverboat Casino, down like maybe in Burlington. And he, once we had come up with that kind of idea, he was like, you're not going to get anything under 10. Like, and so that's, that was an internet search that got us that.
So do you have that in your application? I guess I would want to level set with people before they're applying that this is a $10,000 project versus a $50,000 project. So you're getting the right kind of artist connecting and not misleading us to expectations.
Absolutely, that's a great point, yeah. Once we get that, and I think some of it is, we were kind of hoping that the artist would help us through that, is use, lean on their expertise. But maybe we need to talk to like the Iowa City. Is it Summer of the Arts that does all the ones downtown?
I was gonna say, I know a muralist here in town. She's done several downtown, like big ones that I'm sure would give you, and I mean, I could connect you.
That would be amazing.
She works for the University of Iowa.
That would be great. And I know Angie Jordan, who did the South District one. And she was also, since they had a lot of community input on that one, she again was like, a lot of people showed up free to paint. So it was hard to give a, an idea of that. But yeah, that would be amazing. And any other connections or advice or even questions that you have, we would welcome it because it is a overwhelmingly big undertaking for us that don't, we're not, I mean, like, I'm not an artist, even much less a muralist or even have a concept of like dimensions.
And I imagine it'll be in phases.
Yeah, for sure. The first phase that we want to do is the Learning Center, that one mural in there and then work from there. So that's our big, our big first ask.
So I have a couple of thoughts. Well, several, this is amazing.
Oh, thanks.
Anytime that there can be art that's representative of the beauty of our diverse, of our community is absolutely beautiful. And I know the DEI question gets challenging, but there's ways that we can say that.
We can rework.
Yeah.
I've already thought of something.
We just want to represent our community and everybody feel like they belong. I also really appreciate the fact that it has a sensory aspect, is that a consideration around trauma informed colors. Because I know you mentioned nature and, because I know white can be a little bit institutionalized wise. And so having a little like, like blues and greens and.
Yeah, the blue and the green for us, especially to complement the reds and the oranges, which can sometimes be a little bit startling.
But it kind of meets it down.
Yes, yeah. And inside specifically the cabin, we will, once we get to that stage, I know I keep throwing Kayla up. I really should have asked her to appear with me to present because she really, excuse me, she really is like, we are really working closely on this together. And I was surprised that she didn't present about it last time, but I know they had a lot to talk about. She was going to check in with the Culture City people or even the Iowa City Autism Group and talk about like what they thought would be some good colors. We had that white for inside mainly as a base, but yes, yeah.
Yeah, we did recently at a, where I used to work, we did a whole trauma informed revamping of the office. And so.
Awesome.
Some of the whites.
Did you do that yourself or did you have like a company come in and do it?
Well, we were city, so we did ourselves.
Got it, yeah, yeah.
We didn't have any funding.
Yeah.
So just talking with people, but there's a lot of information.
If you, any of that, please send along.
Absolutely.
Because not only for this specific thing, but I think just for general knowledge of staff, that would be really great.
And reducing the busyness, I think, is a big aspect as well because that gets to be overwhelming. And so as you kind of clear the.
Yes, the palette a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
One more thought just to throw out there. At a couple of our restaurants, there, it looks like a mural, but it's actually a company that we've worked with that has done wallpaper, like specific.
Like a wrap?
Kind of, they come in and they put it up. Field Day has it on their back bar and Tin Roost. It's on a back wall. We actually got one that we didn't like and they came in and redid it. And it's very specific to what has been requested by.
So by the bathrooms in Field Day? Is that what you mean?
Bowling.
Okay, yes.
Behind the bar. But I think the better representation is probably at Tin Roost.
Okay.
In the seating area, where you eat, the eating area.
The big booths in the back, yeah.
At the very, that very back wall.
Okay, yes, 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 yes.
So if it looks like costs are coming in too high, that potentially could be an option.
For sure. Another thing that we talked about is that, because also if you, next time you're in the library, you go into the kids' area or really, I mean, you can almost see the whole library from, from, you know, once you go past those pillars, that big east wall is one large, past where the cabin is, one large white space. So my thought was, once this gets done, we've got this under our belt, a couple of years go by, maybe we wanted to do something there just to tie it in, same kind of thing. But it has been brought up by staff that will, what, what happens when we expand? We're going to put all this money, all this work into an art piece that we then are not going to be able to keep. However, if we got something and then we're able to license or own the rights to it, and then we could replicate it for a new space and put it up or change it and put it up too.
That actually might work on the cabin too.
The cabin too, yeah, yeah. That's what I was thinking as well.
To do something like that.
Yeah, I'm all about saving, saving money.
Great.
I'm all about trying to ask less people for money.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your night. Hope everyone gets home safe.
Thank you.
Hope Amara's.
She hasn't called me in like 20 minutes, so she's fine.
All right. Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We never did get to the Story Walk.
Oh, I really forgot. I wanted to mention, if none of you have been to the Story Walk, which is across from the library at Lurie Centre-Pont, I want you to all take a minute, not this week, because it's not up, but next week, when it will be up, to look at the precision and care that was taken with those book pages because they are amazing, done by a longtime volunteer who has moved up to the trustee.
Very talented volunteer.
Yes, yes, amazing.
At the library.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Now on to item number six, a report from our director.
All right, budget, this is the first piece. As I say every month, we are actually in really good shape. This budget does reflect our amendments back into the budget. And you will note that I mentioned that it does not reflect a $2,500 grant that we received from StoryCorps that was to go into programming. And so I have spoken with Tracy, our city, Assistant City Administrator about that. The money is somewhere, but it is not reflected in this budget. But it's okay because she's assured me that the money will cover the $2,500 somewhere. And it's okay. She just didn't get it in that programming line that I had indicated where it needed to go. So it is probably in library capital, which is why that line is there. We just, at the time, we have not had time to look to figure out, do some sleuthing. And then the next piece to the budget amendments is not actually an amendment. So this is a little bit misleading that it's under the amendment line thing. But I just requested the amount, full amount that we could get from the endowment fund to supplement our budget expenses this year for a very exciting, large author visit that will be happening in May of next year. The planning has been going on since last fall. And it will be at the new beautiful Centennial Center, Hy-Vee Center. And I can't say more. This is a secret. And we are sworn to secrecy. But it's going to be really cool. And we're hoping it can be outdoors because then we can invite everyone to come for free. If it's not outdoors, it's very limited seating. And we know from the last visit this author did somewhere nearby, she drew over 2,000 people. So we're really hoping that the weather will hold. It was initially supposed to be in May or March and they moved it to May. And the one plus to that is that it can then be outside. Does anyone have any questions about the budget? Nope. All right, I will move on. And legislative update, House File 856 that I spoke about last time, that is linked here, did pass. The fortunate pieces that it passed with amendments from the Senate, that really loosened things up. It's still not what we had hoped. But for the most part, we believe, we had a meeting today of the city administrator and our community relations director and our city attorney and myself had a meeting today just regarding general programming grant. Our city attorney will be reviewing some of the library programming and we will be having a meeting later this week to talk about whether it's going to impact that programming. I have indicated to them, and I will let you know that if it does impact the programming, we will be doing some social media on that. It will be very neutral social media, just explaining that this is the impact that this law has had, that this programming is impacted by this. But we will, I think it's important for the public to know what's happening. So Nick and I will work through that, our community relations director. We'll see where it goes. I think we're going to be okay in a lot of areas. I think we'll be fine. I don't think it will impact, for instance, the inclusivity statement that this board, not all of you, but that this board created, except for Scott was there, I believe, that is on the website. I don't think it will impact our new mission statement. So I think the changes that the Senate made, when I read it, the changes, I was like, okay, I think I'm reading this right. And it really, I think it's okay. It's, I mean, for what it is, it's not great, but it's better than it was. So we, and I would imagine that our esteemed governor will sign it, so that's where we are. I don't have a ton, but I am excited about a few things that are coming up with some professional development. I have been accepted, I was invited to put an application into a group called the National Civic Collaboratory. If y'all didn't have a chance to look at it, I would encourage you to look at that group. It's a national organization of cross-sector members from all different walks of life and includes about 60 high school kids who do a leadership thing. Those kids, if you look at the, I think you can get to it to look at the website of their, just introduction, maybe you can't see it, but their introductions, those kids have done more in their small lives than most people that I know. They are involved in national lover leadership. They are doing things in their own communities and creating organizations to help other kids. It is phenomenal. The meetings are, there are three national meetings a year and then one online meeting. And every member is required to attend at least one of the national meetings. They pay for hotel and eating and food expenses. So just getting there, the travel is the only thing that I would be obligated to pay. So I'm hoping that, I mean, I've been accepted now, so I just have to decide when I'm going to go to my first meeting. And I have expressed to Orion, if the city is willing to cover the expense for one of those, that I would cover my own expense to go to any additional ones that I want to go to, since they would be optional.
Where does the funding come from for the hotels and meals?
I would assume it's, Citizens University is the over, group, organization that oversees it. So I'm assuming that Citizens University has grants that cover that cost. And I would imagine they're private grants. They've been in business established for a long time. Also a really cool organization. If you look them up, they're based out of Washington State, I believe. Oh, and I have a link to them also on here. But they, at these meetings, there is, the biggest component is that they have these, some breakouts and times to discuss. The first night is all about breaking bread and talking and connecting with one another. And the next day is a very intense group of meetings, including three of the members get a chance to put in an idea to pitch. And then they're selected to pitch and they pitch an idea. And then the rest of the collaborative just offer support. They might say, hey, I've done a similar thing. I can help you with the logistics. Hey, I've got some funding I think that could help you. So there's all different ways, so it's a big support network for doing cool things. Obviously, being new to it, I will not be pitching anything for a bit, but I'm very excited to be part of it and to see where it leads to the other, the networking that it can lead to with the other folks in the group in, just in general and partnering. Because the pitch is one thing, but there's also just the chance that there could be other partnerships that could be formed. So I'm very excited about it. And then I wanted to tell you all that my friend Tyler Hahn, who's from Turkey, called me a couple of months ago and asked if I would be willing to present at Des Moines Con. I don't know what I thought Des Moines Con was, but I just said, sure. And then he just told us the other day that it's Comic-Con. So we are presenting at Comic-Con in two weeks in Des Moines on a Friday evening, which is really interesting. I hope people will stick around. We are very excited. It's called Libraries, the Original Open World Role Playing Game. I have got a brand new library dress. I'm going to go real kitschy. And Tyler is going to be super campy in his acting as the wizard leader of it all. And Sam and I are going to be the guides to lead everyone to get through four different sections, which includes maker spaces, technology, I can't remember the other two right off the top of my head. technology, I can't remember the other two right off the top of my head. And at the end, anyone who succeeds will be joining the Order of the Cardigan.
That is so perfect.
We are super stoked about this. I'm just like, these two are both just fabulous presenters and fabulous people. So I'm very excited.
Well, I hope there's lots of video.
What a delight, yes.
And like Tyler said, what better group to present to than a bunch of non-library nerds? So we are excited that they chose us. And then just the American Library Association is coming up as well at the end of June. And there is a panel presentation that I'm going to be taking part in, at a program called, or an all-day conference on that Friday, which is called the, it's a Publishers and Librarian Mix. So the panel discussion that I'm going to be part of is how librarians work with publishers in the face of a lot of stuff, the stress that's going on and they wanted some role representation. So that will get to be my piece on that one. And then the other thing that I have to talk about was that the Friends of the Library is doing their book sale. You all should have gotten an invitation if you're around. We would love to have assistance with that. I know we're starting to fill up the spots, but we still have some open spots and would love to have anybody who's willing and able to help. It's a matter of taking cash money or helping people Venmo and get their books and greet people and that's it. So it's not super, just kind of a fun community activity. And then the board this month, while I was not at the board meeting, talked about how they might like to restructure their entire Friends group to do it back, go back to membership-driven Friends. It's in the early stages. They had a lot of cool ideas. I think I have a lot, I've already done some research for them and I'll be ready to report back to them in June. And I think the other big pieces that they have recognized that I am really, really busy and have said that they would be okay or if another member of the staff wanted to step in as the liaison. And Danny Grandinetti, who is our Assistant Marketing Person, has kindly agreed to take on that role. I think Danny will be great at guiding them along as they make these changes and helping them with marketing and thinking about how they might structure. So pretty excited about that. Does anyone have any questions about all the stuff I just threw at you? Other than that, we just have the staff reports. If anybody has any questions about any of those. Let's see, I've got some interesting. There was some fun stuff. I thought there was one thing that I was going to point out. Let's see if I can find it. Just the book bike outreach. I think they went to Remarkable Rigs last week. And then I got a text message the other day from one of our Friends Board members with a picture of the book bike and Cory at the Baseball Diamond. And I just wanted to expand on that because I told her, I said, hey, you know, Justin sent me a picture of you at the Ball Diamond. And she said that she had ridden it over, that was her voyage ride. And she'd ridden it over and there were like four kids riding behind her as she was riding. And she was like, you guys might want to go around. I'm not very fast. And they said, oh, we're following you. We're trying to see where you're going. And they followed her to the Ball Diamonds and then they helped her pick the spot to put the book bike and then they pulled books out of the thing and sat around her and read. And I didn't get a picture. But.
We just envisioned.
What a great story. What a great, great story for the book bike. So very exciting. And the Good Neighbor Book Club just continues to take on a life of its own. They're now called the Good Neighbor Group because they want to expand beyond book clubs. They're doing some really cool stuff. So I think that about covers it for me. I guess the one thing that I did not mention in here that I will tell you just by seeing this, seeing Polaris mentioned, our library system, integrated library system that we use for checkout, there is apparently a move away from SMS text messaging from the company. So the first one that's gone away from it is AT&amp;T. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of AT&amp;T users in our database, but every single day I get a message saying, this message is not supported. So we are working with Polaris to find a solution. They have a solution, but there's another company called Shout Bomb that also has a solution that we'll be looking at that I think might be more reasonably priced. That is all that I have unless you guys have questions.
Is the summer reading kickoff next month?
It is. It's in June this time, which is really further out than normal. It's usually at the end of May. I feel like someone mentioned it. Let's see, maybe not.
And it'll continue to be a crazy, bunch of craziness at the mansion?
It sure is. It is. A lot of games and activities and kids running around.
Yeah, I looked. I didn't see when.
It's, I think it's.
Probably adult one somewhere in there.
Yeah, so if it says when the adult one is, they're all the same time. So if someone, I can't remember if he put it on here or not. So I think it's like, I want to say it's like June 10th or 11th that week. All right, that's all I have.
All right. Shall we move on to the policy review? Item seven, the first policy is the program's policy. Did anyone see anything?
My only question on this one is if there are changes that need to happen with respect to legislation that gets passed, kind of same question as last month with respect to mission and vision, does it make sense to pass this now or wait a month and then make any changes that are needed after a review with?
I don't think that there's anything in this from the stuff that I talked with Grant about that would be impacted. So the big deal in, the biggest takeaway I got from today, from talking to Grant, is that we cannot do a program that we're specifically saying, this is focused on this one small piece of the, it's for one audience only. And it's only for, and we can't do something that's repeated multiple. We can still do one. We just can't do it multiple times. But I'm having him review like right now. So I mean, like, I think most of our programming will be just fine. So I don't see anything in this, I mean, unless it would be A. And I don't think in the way that it's written, that what we're talking about here is that we, I mean, unless Grant thinks we need to take out like racial and just have it more like accessibility and equity only.
I also didn't know if it would make sense to add a new item on here that reflects whatever the standard is from the state, just as like a helpful reminder that we have to adhere to whatever the language is in HF 856.
Yeah, in the law. That I do think could be a good.
Just as like, here's what our parameters are from a policy or programming standpoint.
I like that. And I'll talk to Grant. I think probably it does make some sense, Angela, to just maybe table it until we can get clarification on A.
Then once it gets signed, you'll have an actual code section in the law.
Then you could just say, you know, all programs must be in compliance with whatever section, just as a additional guideline.
That's a good point. Thank you. So I would, yeah, I would suggest that maybe tabling it might be the way to go.
I'll move to table until next meeting, until we have further guidance on what statutory parameters we might have to adhere to.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
In favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say nay. Hearing none and a negative, we will defer table, the program's policy until that can be cleared up. Onto Policy B, the personal policy statement. Personnel policy.
So this statement, just because the way the state has our accreditation worded, we have to either have a personnel policy and if we don't have one, we have to say like how we, what we do. So this just says that we follow the city's personnel policy. That's all we have to have. And it has to be in this, so for the state records. So all I do is just have you guys approve it so that I can have it. Because one, the first year that I started as a director, I think it was not done. It hadn't been done for multiple years. And so I was like, so now I just do it every year. Keep it on here every year so that I'm always up to date with when I have to do the accreditation, which I think will be next year again.
At least this is an easy one.
Yeah, super simple, super easy.
Shall we just approve this one before we go onto the bylaws?
Yes.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. The library personnel policy statement is approved for a year.
And again, the bylaws is not really so much an approval. I mean, you can, but just for your information more than anything because they are written into code, into ordinance. So they're not, there's not a lot that can be changed on them unless we wanted to go through, having the council do a whole approval process to change anything in them that we feel needs to be changed.
And so the issue that we had with our relationship with the county and the county trustee is not necessarily a bylaw issue. It's more of a procedural issue. And we've got that squared away.
Yes. Yeah, and that is one thing I did note in here. And it's, I mean, we could talk about it and take it back to the council. There was another library that reported this last month that they had a trustee that was not attending meetings and was not being responsive. And they didn't know how to address it because there was nothing in their bylaws that addressed it necessarily. A lot of the, and I don't, I thought it was in here somewhere. It's, maybe it's in the counties.
It's in the last section, section three.
Okay.
Or Article Six, Section Three, really. The majority of the board members feel another member is not meeting his obligations.
Yeah, so that's there. What I was thinking, I thought there was a number associated with it. Now, a lot of the people that are responding to this person said that the board member can miss up to six meetings, which I think is astounding. That's a lot of meetings. I mean, without a health reason or without some extenuating stroke. Yeah, yeah. So I mean, we could, but we could also just leave it as is because this is very easy to say, okay, so someone hasn't responded or been to four meetings and is not living up to their role. And it could just be a board decision at that point, which is how it's worded now, which probably is maybe in some ways easier.
Yeah, it's fine. I think we'll know if there's a problem or not.
I mean, like a middle ground would just be some. I think, wasn't there some board member expectations that you put together? I feel like in my intro packet, it's been a while. Or maybe Stephanie, you've looked at them recently? Because I feel like that's kind of where you lay out the framework of what expectations are and why you might be missing it. And so maybe if that's the reference tool of, if those expectations aren't met, then as a board, we can say, we feel like there's an issue under this section rather than having to break it out into a lot of little technical requirements.
Because someone also said they had to remove a board member for the same thing and it was a kind of a battle. So I was like, oh. I feel very fortunate.
And the way that it's written, it's broad enough that, yeah, if they're doing something really crazy or something that's covered without being something very specific, addressing whatever that may be.
So honestly, I think we could just, I mean, I think reviewing, saying we reviewed it and agree that it was fine the way it is, it's great.
Thank you. I think last year I asked if we could just look at these on an annual basis. So thank you for sticking it in there. It's helpful just to like remember what the requirements are.
And I can just add in there, the board reviewed them. I'll add that line into the bottom so that it's noted that they were reviewed this year. I don't know if that would necessarily need a motion or anything that I can just say.
Okay. Unless we like taking votes. Very good. Moving on. Does anyone have any new business that they would like to bring up? Hearing none, I am going to move to item number nine. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.